I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. If you'll stand for a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will, we have the roll call as we're gathering that on a sheet right now for all the commissioners. We will, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Harrington, Commissioner Barris-Bedeen. Agenda's approved. Moving on to public comment. We will, we have 20 minutes allotted for this. I ask that everybody use two minutes. If there's no one waiting in line and we're still within the 20 minutes, you're more than welcome to come back up again. We just want to make sure we go through any, any and all subject matters so everybody has a chance to talk. So I ask that everybody respect that two-minute rule. There'll be, we don't have the nice city council timer tonight with the lights, but what we do have is my trusty five-year-old iPad which has a timer on it. So you'll hear that go off. It's nothing obnoxious. It's not bad. So if everybody would just respect the two minutes, I would greatly appreciate it. We certainly welcome comments of anything for school business. And up first is Jeff Smith, followed by Donna McDonald.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Smith. This fall, I will have three kids, one at each level of the educational system in Burlington. Tonight, I am here on behalf of Claire Wool, reading a statement she's prepared on behalf of the parent and community groups Burlington Friends and Supporters of Education. Claire is also a parent of three children. She's concerned about the reallocation of funds for your growing autocracy. While we have reduced classroom instruction, reduced access to foreign language, reduced librarians, and accepted as the norm BHS auditorium study halls of 40-plus students without desks. We've increased the number of administrators at our district central office, specifically in the past three months. So to the school board and superintendent, I ask, who challenges you on these decisions that are not student-based? The shakeup of leadership is done, much of which was done without diverse input from your stakeholders. The exclusion of parents and teachers in the hiring process may be easy and it may be within your right, but does not show an understanding of our community. The shakeup will cost our district an estimated $500,000 between human resources costs, relocation incentives, compensation, and professional development. Your assignment of nine interim principals and vice principals to our public schools is a costly decision in a year when our school board chose to cap our budget to the state of Vermont while the state of Vermont lifted a percentage of the Act 46 cap. Both of these decisions result in cuts to student classroom instruction and directly impact student outcomes. Specifically moving Amy Mellon Camp, one of our highest-paid school district employees, to a foreign elementary school, setting results in having to hire a new principal to high school at a cost of $127,000. Moving Rich Amato from Hunt to a central office position required the hiring of a new Hunt vice principal, Mattie Scheid, at a cost of $102,000. Moving Tom Flurry to a newly created position is a cost of $104,000. So as we go through those changes, Superintendent O'Bang, you've allocated over $500,000 of new expenditures to the new administration and central office. So I ask you, school board, who do you choose? Student success or central office and administrative positions? Stop in.
Thank you. Donna McDonald?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about the proposed cuts in teacher librarians. I'm Donna Sullivan McDonald, the president-elect of the Vermont School Library Association and past president of the International Society for Technology and Education Librarians Network. ISTI's librarians network includes several thousand teacher librarians worldwide. My focus today is on the Future Ready Schools Initiative, which is being spearheaded by the Alliance for Excellence in Education and the U.S. Department of Education. Launched in November of 2014, this bold effort emphasizes collaborative leadership and creating an innovative school culture that personalizes learning using digital tools. Future Ready Schools has over 50 national partners, including the National School Board Association, the NEA, National Associations of Elementary and Secondary Principals, and ISTI. Seventeen states have committed to developing a statewide program to support school district leaders in this digital transformation that will effectively use technology to engage students, empower teachers, and improve learning outcomes. I'm pleased to say that Vermont is one of the 17 pioneer states. Last month, an expansion of Future Ready Schools was announced. Future Ready Librarians is an innovation initiative aimed at positioning librarians as leaders in the digital transformation of learning. Future-ready librarians embrace change and innovation in education. As teachers, they empower students as creators and digital citizens. They collaborate with classroom teachers as curators and guides. School librarians are critical in this transition to and sustainability of effective digital learning. Your librarians play a powerful role in school-wide curriculum integration. They are instructional and technology leaders, especially in the light of future-ready schools. Your students, faculty, and staff need your teacher librarians. I hope you will reconsider the proposed cuts to teacher librarians in the Burlington school system. Thank you for your time.
Wow. That's impressive. Karen Grace?
Hello, my name is Kevin Grace, resident of the beautiful South End, parent of a ninth grader and a sixth grader, employee of J.J. Flynn Elementary School, and speaking today for Amy Truchant, tech integration specialist for Burlington who was not able to be here. In support of the Burlington School District, teacher librarians, when I enter the school library in the Burlington Elementary Schools, I expect to see any number of learning activities occurring. These might include students browsing for and checking out books, students participating in lessons facilitated by the librarian, students reading independently or with others, the students using print and electronic resources to conduct research in support of classroom investigations. These are the types of activities you would expect to see in any school library. I know, however, that in our elementary schools in Burlington, you can expect to see a lot more. As the elementary technology integration specialist for the Burlington School District, I have the privilege of working in all six elementary schools to support our teachers in their efforts to integrate educational technology. Our elementary librarians play an important role in this task, so in addition to the activities mentioned previously, you would also see the following occurring in our elementary libraries in the Burlington School District. Students participating in virtual reality field trips using Google Cardboard, students creating book trails using green screen technology, students coding, students creating public service announcements for community in their home languages, students programming robots such as dot and dash to maneuver obstacles and physical constraints, students using Arduino's, little bit, squishy circuits and/or snap circuits to understand cause and effect or simply to dabble in and make, students telling stories using stop-motion animations, students creating web-based forums to survey staff members and peers in the process of thoughtfully and effectively allocating library budget monies, students collaborating, students preparing to present at Monday morning meeting or Friday town meetings or for a Burlington School District Board meeting, students asking questions, students learning from and about other students and cultures from across the United States, Canada, and beyond via, beyond via mystery Skype, students collaborating, students composing their own music using note flight technology, a poetry recitation. I'll come back at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen Hosley?
I'm Helen Hosley. I live in Ward 7. According to the board's testimony on fact-finding, the board's primary financial goals are accountability, sustainability, and transparency, and I quote, "So I ask, how transparent can the board be when a full detailed budget is yet to be forthcoming? How can the cuts to direct student services and subsequent hiring of central office staff be justified when a transparent budget has yet to be released?" According to the board's testimony, I quote, "The board has four forces shaping the final budget. First and foremost, our student needs and our responsibility to ensure the high-quality education that meets the needs of all of our students," end quote. And yet, the cuts to direct student services such as classes for all students in the high school and librarians throughout the district flies in the face of what the board claims to be first and foremost. In the board's answer to question number 14 in the same document, quote, "Do you believe that the BSD is burdened with too many administrators?" Question mark, end quote. And the answer was, "No, in reality, there are not enough to manage a district as sufficiently as should be managed. Moreover, we have cut several administrative positions in the last four years. Example, Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Director of Diversity, and HR Director positions." In the most recent budget, more than 400,000, or roughly 30% of the cuts, were to central administration, end quote. And yet, there are positions that have been added to central office in the last three months. District principal, new assistant director, HR assistant director, director of safety and permanent principal sub, and director, district equity, quote, coach, excuse me, with the following new positions that have been posted. HR administrative assistant to HR associates, principal of Burlington Tech Center to replace Tracy, of course, because she can't manage two entities. Building up the central office administration is one that would be in line with big-city schools, one that Mr. Obin is familiar with. It is not appropriate for Burlington schools, and it misappropriates money that could be used for direct student services. That's for your submission.
Is it Kara Clopton?
Thank you for your time. My name's Kara Clopton, and I'm honored to serve as J.J. Flynn's library media specialist. Your BSD libraries add value in four key areas: education, employment, empowerment, and engagement. President Obama signed the Every Student Succeeds Act into law, ensuring that effective school libraries is addressed in our state and our local plans. Our nine school libraries are learning hubs. They're on-demand help centers where our students use carefully-selected technologies and the latest information resources. We help our patrons become future-ready. BSD-certified teacher librarians work with every student. We work with every educator on our campuses. We nurture creativity. We are collaborative leaders. We personalize students' learning. All BSD students, staff, and families should have the benefit of highly-trained, full-time school librarians who guide them in reading a wide variety of information sources. This is fundamental to their learning, fundamental to personal growth and enjoyment, and bridging the achievement gap. Our libraries are transforming. They're blended learning innovation spaces. Kids tinker in maker spaces. We promote learning through inquiry and play. We help demystify science, math, technology, and engineering. We offer digital literacy training. We teach safe online practices. We guide social media use. We're the heart of our communities. Our nine school libraries are a resource for Burlington citizens of any age to find what they need to improve their quality of life. Kane, who's a first-grade child at my school, he brought me a note at the end of June. "Thank you, Ms. Clopton. If we didn't have a library, I wouldn't be smart. Now I'm blooming with smartness!" Please help us grow strong readers, researchers, artists, mathematicians, lovers of learning with equity and with excellence in mind.
Thank you. Kate?
Hi, I'm Kate Davy. I'm a teacher librarian from Rygate, Vermont, but I do, I'm a devoted fan of Burlington culture and services. Does that qualify me for speaking? Okay. So I come from a very, very, very small district compared to yours, but I absolutely understand the need to contain costs. It gets, that gets to a very granular level at my school. And because I do understand that, that's why I would like to speak in support of retaining the teacher librarians at the Burlington School District. Because libraries are central to the school and to everything that the school does, it's really the most cost-effective place to put your resources because the teacher librarians can help every single person in any given school. The research very solidly indicates that having trained certified teacher librarians in a school increases student learning and increases student achievement and increases test scores. Not that I want to say the test scores are the end-all and be-all. And the two most fundamental skills that our students need are literacy and computer literacy, and it's the teacher librarians that are providing those skills for our students. I have had the privilege of spending a couple days job shadowing at the Integrated Arts Academy and was totally amazed by, we don't have a lot of ELL students at my school, and I was just incredibly impressed by the way that the English-language learner students at the academy are working twice as hard as any of the rest of us just to get through the day. And I think that the teacher librarian supports that they get for learning literacy and computer literacy is what's going to help them turn into the finest possible Burlington citizens that they can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Carpenter?
Hello, and thank you for this opportunity. I am a Burlington resident, taxpayer, and Burlington teacher. We firmly believe that all of our Burlington schools need full-time teacher librarians who support literacy, technology, equity, personal learning, and beyond. Teacher librarians play an essential role in supporting the educational environment of the entire school community. Collaboration is imperative in all educators' work, and teacher librarians are a critical part of that model. Strong collaboration is the foundation from which powerful teaching and colleagueship grow. There seems to be a misconception about what our teacher librarians do each day. Our teacher librarians work tirelessly beyond their four walls. Some examples of how teacher librarians reach each student include, but are not limited to, teaching weekly library and literacy skills to every class in the building, teaching and supporting technology skills with both students and staff, skills such as coding, safe technology use to prevent cyberbullying, smart board use, and setup of Google Classroom, organizing, scheduling, and implementing SBAC and WIDA testing, teaching of writing and reading intervention groups, researching, ordering, and purchasing books and materials based on student and staff needs and interests to support all BSD-mandated curriculum, using interlibrary contacts to acquire resources for teachers which are not available within our district but which are needed for curriculum. This is a cost-saving benefit for our district. Grant-writing to support learning and technology in our building, and arranging for authors to visit who are specifically aligned to our curriculum. None of these things would be possible without the strong sense of community and the relationships that our teacher librarians have built. Your decision to arbitrarily cut and transfer teacher librarians will lead to a breakdown in our community and also result in a sense of loss. We firmly believe that every school must have a full-time teacher librarian. All students in our district deserve equitable services. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patty Kissel? Followed by Beth Lane.
I'm Hattie Kissel, and this fall, I'm excited to say that I will be starting my 29th year of teaching in the Burlington School District. I remember you, Jacob. I heard from several reliable sources that although there is no publicly disclosed money to reinstate our teacher librarians, recently, a new position was created and filled for a principal safety person. This is in addition to a floating substitute special projects principal. So the math for me is a one-and-a-half extra administrators that don't have specific specifics. I'd like to know where this position was posted and what the requirements for this position were. In a time of no available money, how does this happen? Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Lane?
Hello, I'm Beth Lane. I've taught in Burlington since '87. Thirteen years at HO Wheeler, when I was HO Wheeler, thirteen years at Edmunds L, teaching fourth and fifth grade at both schools, three years as librarian at the Sustainability Academy, and next year, I will be the librarian at CP Smith Elementary School. I was asked to speak tonight for Jill Allen. She started this petition, and she's ill, so I will just read it out loud. It's short to you. It says, "We oppose the budget cuts to needed elementary school services such as the reduction of elementary librarian positions at Integrated Arts Academy and Sustainability Academy to half-time. The reduction of these services will adversely affect students and Burlington as a whole." These have 158 signatures right now, and I just wanted to read one quote from them. There are several quotes throughout these. This one says, "As a classroom teacher at the SA, I know my curriculum and daily educational practices with children will be severely limited by the lack of a full-time librarian. We tried this before, and the results were disaster. Research is clear: qualified librarians in schools, full-time, with well-stocked libraries, improve student learning for all students, especially those with limited resources. Please do not give them another obstacle to overcome." And then, before I came today, I saw a post by Liz Curry. So, hi, Liz. So I just wanted to remark just two things on that. One thing you had mentioned was promising conversations with the city's libraries. And so I guess we're just really curious about that. A while ago, the librarians had spoken with Ruby, the director of libraries at Fletcher Free, and she had said she'd had one brief conversation. Rebecca Goldberg, the children's librarian, had had nothing. I know Ruby is now leaving the Fletcher Free Library, so we're just really curious what that means and if there's more information along that. And the second is that we believe there are places in the budget less central to student learning.
Thank you. Sharon Hayes?
Good evening. I'm Sharon Hayes. I'm a teacher librarian in the district. This community here is trying to persuade you to allow full-time teacher librarians for all BSD students. Being full-time has allowed me to learn my students' stories and collaborate with teachers to improve students' reading, writing, and critical thinking skills. My story is not unique. All district teacher librarians wear many hats: teacher, co-teacher, librarian, technology integrationist, and literacy interventionist. Our direct teaching is integral to student success. Here are a few stories. A second grader was inspired by poet Ted Shy, whose visit I arranged. I collaborated with teachers. I read Ted's poems in the library, and they wrote with students in the classroom. Students read poems as part of the morning announcements during National Poetry Month. Here's my student's poem, "Spring Weather." "Spring came; leaves grow on trees; birds chirp like the wind, and you can breathe air however you want." Spring weather. A fifth grader hated the ending of each little bird that sings. "Why did the dog have to die?" "Maybe the dog doesn't have to die," I suggested, thanking the student for providing what became the book group's prompt for our culminating assignment. Each of us wrote our own final chapter in Google Classroom and then shared. These stories show the importance of full-time teacher librarians. Next year, I have no morning hours. I won't have time to support book groups, young poets, or struggling readers. Students at SA, IIA, and the high school will receive 50% less professional library service. Four of nine teacher librarians will be learning all new students and staff, making us less effective collaborators. Please allow full-time teacher librarians for our students, all of our students, not just some. And please return us to the schools where we have developed trust to best support our students. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes everybody that was on here. Is there anyone that has not spoken yet? Because we, I mean, we, yeah, one more time, one more chance, then we are, we're already past our limit. If you'd like to speak, go right ahead. Can you state your name, please?
Yeah. Deirdre Donovan, Burlington resident. I have four kids. Three will currently be at the high school next year: a freshman, a junior, and a senior. I have called the high school. I've called the central office. I, I'm interested in getting my child's report card, the two from the high school, and I would like their schedule for next year. The senior has not been able to get a science course. I'd like to register her at UVM. I cannot do that not knowing the free blocks. And I have called continually and have had no response. Both Amy Mellon Camp and Patty Wesley were very helpful. They're no longer there. I've called the high school. I've called Tracy. I don't get any responses from anyone. And I cannot book that child's course at UVM for dual enrollment without knowing what her schedule is. I think it's also important to note that I'm a Chittenden County educator, in another high school in the county. We sent our schedules out in May. There were no problems with any of the registration. Kids got what they asked for. They were able to take high-level classes, dual enrollment. They were able to get their schedules. I've got three kids, lives at stake. You have all of Burlington children's lives at stake. We cannot be college and career-ready, we cannot be competitive, without informing parents about our child's progress and not getting our child's schedules for next year. You need to move faster.
Thank you. Okay, this will close our public forum and move on to board reflections. Is there anyone from the board that has a reflection? Seeing none, I will close this. No, I'm sorry. Anne, please.
Trying to generate. I too am really upset about the library cuts. And I understand that it was principal decisions to do that. They had to cut a certain amount, and they decided, they decided on, on the librarians. I would like to know how we're, is this on?
It's not a microphone. It's just only for the, the, the.
Oh, it looks good, though, huh?
Hold it closer.
No, it counts. It's just for the recording.
I would like to know how the needs are going to be met by 50% librarian services. And I, I'm told that we will be within state regulations, that we're working it out. And I know that we need time on things like this, but you know, it is, it is July, middle of July. I'm uncomfortable with not knowing how our students, especially those with very limited English and probably very few books, if any, at home, are going to get the services that they've been getting from our librarians. And I'm also shocked that Deidra's children do not have their schedule. Maybe we can talk about that later. And report cards?
Did you say report cards?
Don't rebut it. Okay. You just want to do it.
Okay. So Deidra's not the only one. So those are the two things I'm concerned about.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? Commissioner Sabino?
I just wanted to thank all of you for coming to public comment. This is always an awkward situation in which we, you know, we absorb this. It takes time to percolate, and we can't really respond immediately. But I did want to thank you all for being here. I really appreciate it.
I also do appreciate everybody coming here. We go through this every year. It's an unfortunate thing. So two years ago was the busing, if I remember right. The busing was on the block, and, and everybody came out. It's, it's not comfortable. None of us at all want to do this. When we, when we hear of where these things are going every year, we really wish we had the solution. But there's so many things outside our control, between $4 million in federal tax cuts, between deferred maintenance of tens of millions of dollars, and, you know, luckily, this year, we had a, over a million-dollar surplus that we were able to not have to cut teachers with. That's over 10 teachers that didn't have to get cut because of the prudency of, in 2015. But that's not going to happen again. So this is, this is, the financial future we have is, this is the beginning. This is, this is a, this is a very, very tough time to be looking at these things. And unfortunately, it can be very tough for us trying to look over the whole community and where there's, where there's needs that aren't being met to where the kids aren't graduating. graduating. They're not graduating. That's our purpose. And they're not graduating. They can't read by third grade, right? So, the money is finite. The money is finite. It's scarce, and we're afraid of what is going to happen in the future. So, we really wish we never had to go through this every year. We wish every single thing that you're talking about was, was preventable. We really do. Thank you. Anyone else from the board?
Seeing none, I'll close board reflections. And moving on to the board report. Commissioner Seguino, the fact-finding meeting?
Yes. So, for, there are numerous commissioners that were at fact-finding: Mark Barlow, Kat Kleeman, and Anne Judson, and myself as well. And we presented our framework for our proposals in the negotiations along with the BEA. We met for about four or five hours. And Ms. Hosley gave some information about that. I wanted to reiterate a few things. One of the greatest concerns that we have about these negotiations is that the prior board committed the district to ensuring that salaries were in the middle of the middle in the Chittenden County. And that is really an untenable component of the contract. It basically removes local control from Burlington and makes our decisions around, around funding dependent upon decisions made in other school districts. And so, we, we have, we want to pay fair compensation to teachers. And at the end of our, the last person on our team that presented to the Fact Finder, former superintendent, interim superintendent Howard Smith, presented a scenario in which we could increase salaries to the middle of the middle based on reallocating funding from some other components of the contract. For example, one of them was Burlington teachers pay 15% of their healthcare premium. That is significantly lower than in other parts of the state government, as, other places in the economy. And we're requesting that teachers contribute a bit more. In any case, I don't want to go into too much detail about this, but the, the, the testimony is on the board docs. I'm sorry, not on board docs, but on the negotiations webpage. And you should certainly look at it and look at some of the testimony. I did want to, you know, I did want to respond to Ms. Hosley's comment, that she didn't read all of my comments about too many administrators. So, let me read the part that was not mentioned today. And that is that the district's staff is overstretched, such that they are at times not able to respond in a timely manner to complaints, be they from teachers about harassment by other teachers, or complaints filed by students. Failure to address these concerns in a timely manner has a negative effect on school climate, teacher morale, and most importantly, student learning. I think we will all disagree, perhaps. We're not all the superintendent, and we might disagree on the decisions that need to be made. But it is fundamentally important to have administrative staff to support teachers. And, and in fact, we have cut numerous administrative positions. I think there might be a little bit of math error in some of the discussions here. So, in any case, there's a more complete discussion of what our proposal is. And I'm going to ask Anne Judson, Commissioner Judson, who was there, to talk about what the next steps are in the negotiation.
Right. So, the report is due from the Fact Finder 30 days after the press, after the fact-finding session. So, that means that we expect the report by July 30th. Once we get that, both parties have 10 days from the receipt of the fact-finding report to review the findings, which is about, which is August 10th. Then, there's a 20-day period after, afterward, in which parties may enter further negotiations. So, it could come to August 30th, where we could decide to go into further negotiations if either side is not happy with the fact-finding report.
Thank you to Commissioner Judson. Next up is in regards to the special election that is coming up, based on, with Kyle Dotson's resignation. So, the, it's actually an election that's going to be held in conjunction with the primaries on August 9th. This is for the East District Commissioner, and this is someone that's voted in by Ward 1 and Ward 8. And there's two people that got in their packages in time, along with the ballots. And they should have ballots ready by, by this week. They can either go in, or, you know, to get a mail-in ballot if you want to. You can just go in and grab one. And there's been a seven-day notice published also. So, please feel free, if you live in Ward 1 or Ward 8, to, and you want to do a mail-in ballot, please just go ahead and call the city clerk, and they'll get one for you.
Can you tell us who those two people are, or not?
Yeah, sure. Kathy Olwell and Tom Derrinthal. Jake, you're up.
All right. Thank you. Student report. We have not received our report cards yet, nor our schedules. Personally, schedule-wise, I was emailed by my guidance counselor, and I was able to go in over the summer and talk to receive my schedule and resolve conflicts with it. I don't know if every student has received this email, or, that's a matter of personal. So, I really hope we get a date on report cards and schedules. And that's about it. Thank you.
There's not really time. It's the student report time.
We can't ask questions.
No, not this time. You all set, Jake?
Yes, thanks.
Okay. This closes out the board report and moves on to the superintendent's report, siding with the capital plan, next steps.
Thank you, Chair. If you have some information on capital plan, we have a freeze on the data projector, so I'll have to refer to the board docs. And I've got...
Sorry?
Can't hear you.
This doesn't work anyways, right?
No, they don't work. You just have to speak.
No, we're having a freeze on it. I wanted to project what's on board docs, so people could see it and follow along, those who don't have access to it. But it seems to be searching still, so.
Well, the cable's disconnected.
No. It was, it was on. It was on a minute ago, but it just, it just, but so we'll...
So, this is available online, though?
It's online, yeah. Yeah, it's on. It's posted, but I wanted to project it, so people could actually see it as we spoke to it. But, okay, I'm going to get, so one of the things we wanted to share, just, just a quick update on the, for those who are not able to view. But the first stanza in the document talks about timelines in terms of sharing information with community and the timelines that we have to sort of follow in order to get the, a ballot onto the, the city's ballot for November, and looking at bonding to support our capital plan. So, those of you who don't have access to it, if you go onto the board docs, you'll be able to see some timelines and opportunities for community presentation and input is laid out in there. The vote is on the 8th, so it kind of works backwards, so you can see that. And what we're going to be sort of sharing with you, and I'll get Marty to speak to it a little bit, is the architects and engineers have done a study in terms of all our schools and our buildings, and they've done analysis in terms of what our needs are. And we're going to be able to share three different options in terms of what's needed. And they kind of gradate from, you know, the minimal, trying to do, trying to, you know, cost-effective, trying to, and then sort of to the high end in terms of some really nice enhancements. So, I'll get Marty to kind of speak to each briefly. And if it comes up, we'll, we'll show you.
Sure. I'll speak to each of those. I just wanted to also add that everybody's aware that last month, you had a presentation by Mike Smith on our long-term planning process. We have, we have actually created a link on our website that is specific to capital planning. So, if you have not seen that presentation and you'd like to view it, it's available under that capital planning link. As we move forward with presenting new things regarding capital planning, we will be doing it and adding it to that capital planning link on the website. We also have done a capital assessment to all of our buildings. We hired an outside consultant to assess our building conditions. They, we had engineers go through each of the buildings and assess what the overall capital needs are. That study was done by EMG. That, that summary report is also available on the website. You can view that there. But what we are really seeing is that the, our overall deferred maintenance of all of our building is, buildings are in excess of $50 to $60 million. So, as we, as Yao talked about, these three options that we're going to bring forward for a November bond vote, bond vote is to address that $50 to $60 million deferred maintenance amongst all of our buildings. So, our option A would be to address the deferred maintenance around all the buildings, address building codes and life safety, as well as ADA requirements. There are some proposals for a, for, for classroom addition at Champlain Elementary School to address some space constraints, and as well as a separate cafeteria at Edmonds in Champlain, also to address some space constraints around having a shared cafeteria and gymnasium, and also renovating this building here to be a dedicated preschool center. So, all of the four options that we'll be bringing forward include, address all of those factors. And then, option A is to simply address the preventative maintenance needs of BHS, and, which, which is roughly a total cost of $65 million. And then, option B, if everybody has been familiar, that we have been talking about a possible BHS construction project for a number of years now. So, we don't want to disregard the work that was done by Black River, who had identified a couple of different options for a BHS renovation. So, the least-cost total renovation that was proposed a few years ago by Black River was roughly $65 million dedicated to BHS. So, our option B would include all of the deferred maintenance and others, other things I spoke about for the rest of our schools, as well as incorporating that BHS renovation of $68 million for a total capital investment of $114 million. And then, our option C is around the option of doing a full demolition of the existing high school and reconstructing that, that high school, which would be a cost of $95 million for, for a total capital bond for $146 million. So, those are the, the three plans that we're going to bring forward. And over the next couple of months, we're going to start having conversations with stakeholders and community groups around which one of those options that we want to look forward to bringing forward to a November bond vote.
So, just to summarize, there are a couple of things that we, well, first of all, there is, we have established a site, so you can go up there and you can look at all the information that Marty's talked about, inclusive of the, the data that the, the architects and engineers collected. So, there's a lot of documents. You can go in and look, and look at that. But some of the things that we definitely have to do, we have no choice, is the accessibility ADA pieces. We have to be compliant. So, regardless, that has to be in there at some point. We have to find a way to do that. You, everyone knows, we have old buildings. And it's not really as much about accommodation in terms of getting more kids in there. It's about the spaces that are falling apart. And I wish I could show you the, the clip I have, because Marty's been working on videos at our sites, school by school, so you can kind of see some of the, the hotspots in terms of, you know, bad stairs, in the boiler areas, and some of the things, so you can actually see. So, look forward to the site. You can go onto the site. We'll, we'll probably have them posted up probably by beginning of next week. You'll be able to look and see for yourself in terms of some of the deferred maintenance. And you know about deferred maintenance. If you don't do it now, it just gets worse, right? A crack becomes a hole, and then the ceiling. So, those are the things that we must do. But as you look at the plan, it goes forward, then we start looking at some of the enhancement pieces, right? So, that's where we have to sort of bring it to community and see what the will is in terms of what people want to invest in. We want to just take care of the, the basics, and we know we can still run programs and that, or it's an opportunity to look at some enhancements. The plan is a 10-year plan, so it's not all one shot at a time, right? So, the, the numbers that Marty shared with you were big numbers, but those are, those are numbers over 10 years in terms of what that equates to as the tax dollar. We're working on that, so it's not going to be a big number of increase every year. But we'll be able to set out a plan where you can see some difference in our buildings as we move forward. But we'll start with the deferred maintenance, which, which has to happen, and then move from there. If you go on to the, to the site, you'll see, or even if you go to board docs, you'll see a document that has a school by school, and it's already a calculation in terms of just the deferred maintenance that's in the school. So, if you're in a particular school, you can see where some of those areas are. And we're hoping that people will have some good reflection around the needs of our school and give us some good guidance around what we bring forward to the board to make a recommendation, and then to the ballot on, in November, to get support to, to fix our, fix our buildings.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for doing this. But how will you decide amongst these three plans, the one that you want to bring to the board?
Yeah, I think we're going to start with just pretty much sharing information with the community, so that people, people aren't, maybe not be aware of the, of the needs that we have in terms of sharing that. And then, the three plans will kind of illustrate what will happen, right, in terms of just the basic needs. And then, we're going to sort of get some information from the community in terms of what the building, because I think one of the factors we'll have to put in the presentations is what's the cost going to be, right? And then, people will be able to weigh that in terms of, okay, we get this if we, you know, contribute these dollars. And then, that'll give us enough information to say, you know, what the will of the community is, if the community are willing to do the Cadillac version, or just, just fix the basics and move forward. And then, we'll bring something forward to the board, and the board will have an opportunity to, to make a decision based on that.
I guess my question is more, I can see that there'll be a spectrum of, you know, willingness to, to pay for these different plans. And there'll be some in the community who would want a new high school?
Yeah.
And there'll be some that would just want the deferred maintenance done. So, it's not clear to me what the process would be. And even if we share with the community, how we'll make that, how that decision is made.
Yeah, we're hoping to gather input through online, as well as our community consultations. And then, when we come back, I mean, that's going to be a hard decision for the board to make, but weighing all the other challenges we have, right, in terms of, you know, where do we go? Because you're right, you're going to have a range from people who want to go for the Cadillac, and people who are saying, "Let's just do the basics and let's move on." But that'll be another tough decision that the board will have to, to decide on, and also weighing, you know, what's actually going to happen at, at the ballot, right? So, we want to, we want to put something forward that people are actually going to want to support as well. Right?
I may have missed this one. I was looking at this, but, so if I did, I'm sorry. But did you say you planned to present us with the actual tax scenarios for each option, so the public would understand?
Absolutely. Yeah, people have to know what they're going to, what their investment's going to be.
Yeah, as clear as it could be, so that we could really assess people's willingness to find out what they're willing to invest in. But I think in order to get that, people need to know, like, some concrete numbers about the tax impact, over time, too, not just like a few numbers, but really some kind of, you know, long-term projection of what it would cost.
Yeah. Yeah. That has to happen, because people need to know what their dollar value is going to give them, right? So, we're also, like you reminded me, we're also, we'll provide commissioners with some, like a small package of information. So, when you are at your MPAs or other community events, you have some resources to share in terms of what it's about. And also, direct people, certainly to our website, who have access, because we'll be loading as much information up there for people who want to get into it deeper. They can take a look.
Sit down on that one. Strategic planning summary?
Yep, strategic planning. Okay. Just an update. I think the last month, I did do an update in terms of the consultation process, where we've done the community pieces. We've had different stakeholders, students as well. And then, we did the June 13th. We had our staff day, where we had an opportunity for staff to identify some priority areas and have education camps and rooms. And they generated some documents, feedback around certain topics that they felt were important to be considered. And as we've gathered that information, and our team has been collating that information and trying to cluster the areas. Thus far, based on, from the beginning of the process to now, we've got three major areas that we've clustered things into that has to do with sustainable facilities and finance, which is huge, inclusive teaching and learning. And there's another area where we got to kind of work on the category, but it has to do with equity and community engagement, but trying to get word smitten to find out what, what. And under those areas, we're looking at the priority pieces that have been identified and look at the next steps in terms of trying to plan. You know that the board has been working on the mission, vision, and values, so we did give that opportunity... vision and values. So we did give that opportunity to staff on June thirteenth to contribute to that work too. And there were some submissions from some of the groups that were helpful. And the board has been working on that aspect and we're gonna continue to develop that and hope that we have at least a draft product that in, before school starts, when I meet with the staff to sort of share with them the board's thinking and give them another crack at it in terms of how do you make it better, right? And then we're gonna move to the next step in terms of the, the operational part. And that's the critical part, I think, specifically for staff. We've engaged staff and in the, in June thirteenth, we've got names of individuals and emails in terms of areas that they're really specifically interested in. And I hope that as we move to the next phase, when we do the implementation of the development of the operational plan, we can invite some of those people who are interested to be part of those teams as we develop the priority planning. And all this should hopefully line up to having something for January, which gives Nate and I an opportunity to start aligning our budget process with this. I don't like the budget process that we have currently. Something we inherited and Nate, I know, just came in and tried, we don't like, if we could start over, we'd do it totally different. And this year, we have, we have a chance to reset some things. So that's gonna give us a chance to, to do some things differently next year. One of the things that I've been working with Nate and the team around is developing a process that's student needs base driven. You do that part first and then you implement all the other areas. And so having priority areas will give us those areas that we look to. What's happened in Burlington, frankly, I'll tell you, has been advocacy budget planning. People come and say, we need to do this, we need to do that, we need to do that, right? We haven't really had a process where we say, okay, we're gonna focus on the schools and allocate those dollars first and then move to the next step in terms of, we, we don't do that because it's already gone. So it's hard to get the dollars for the things that people are saying are important. So now we're getting the input from staff saying, this is important, this is important. And we can have those conversations with, with our staff early in the year. I heard a speaker today talk about process in other districts in terms of course selections and, and I'm totally supportive of that. And I've been familiar with that kind of process. And I think even our process starts way too late. Like we should be engaging at the high school level early in the fall so we can get some of that data. So we can put that into the budget. Because what happens for us, once we've set the budget, it's done. Like we're already into next year. Like we're talking about things for, that we're already, we're already thinking about next year. Things are already set in the budget and then it's hard to go backwards. But if we can start getting that information early, then we can start planning. And then as when the budget process goes, we can say, oh yeah, we know we needed, you know, X amount of teachers for this and for this. We can plan that in there. And so if we move our strategic planning and get it done for January, it'll sync in line for the next planning. We can start looking at the next four years in terms of how we do it. And we're not going through this exercise of, we need this, we need this. We know that we have that, we have that piece. The other thing that lines with the strategic planning around the budget piece is developing budget formulas. We have no metrics on allocating dollars. It's just on advocacy. Once again, whether a principal comes to a superintendent or a parent goes to a superintendent or, and, you know, you're able to persuade them and they say, okay, well, that sounds good. But some metrics around why we do that and putting in the equity index around ELL, free and reduced lunch and special ed, right? So we've been having those conversations. We've, and our principals have been excited about this process in terms of being able to do projected enrollment. That's the other piece that we haven't done in Burlington. We don't do projected enrollments. We just, we should be doing projected enrollments. We should have some data from the last few years. What happens over the summer? Do we increase by twenty kids or thirty kids at each school? So we know and we can put that in the planning. We can plan for that. And then as we're able to roll that out. So if we can make that shift, it takes a little bit. It's, it's a little bit of hard work because there's so many pieces happening at the same time. But if we can move those pieces together, by the time we finish the cycle, we should be a place where we can, we can start and say, okay, these are our priorities. We do the schools and these are our priorities. And then we allocate the dollars for those priorities that we've identified. And we're not adding other areas because that's the one, the other pieces too around strategic planning. We'll give us a plan that we can focus on. So when people come forward with great new ideas, because there's always new ideas, we can say, well, we gotta meet our priorities first. And then we can talk about some of the pieces. It'll, it'll make us a little bit more disciplined. But I know it's painstaking to, to change, turn the ship around, a big ship like this and get there. But I'm feeling good about the progress we've, we've gotten so far in the strategic planning process. So look forward to continuing the updates within the fall.
Thank you. Any questions?
Superintendent Obang, I wanted to follow up on something that came out of the board's strategic planning. You had mentioned that there were a number of breakout groups. You gave sort of some big categories here. But I wonder if you could tell us, you, you mentioned that mental health was a surprising one that emerged and that there was a libraries group. And I wonder if you could just say how they're fitting into these three categories and if there's anything you wanna share about those?
So I'll tell you, so the, the educate, they call them ed camps, education camps that we had, that we had staff allocated to different rooms. They came out of staff survey that we did. So for, so we said, we have these categories. We sent it out to staff and staff identified certain areas. And the areas that emerged became our rooms. So we had about thirty rooms that we had selected. But we left a space for other, something that wasn't, you know, consistently captured. And surprisingly, there was probably two, two areas. One was mental health, which somebody put on and said, hey, this wasn't really mentioned. No one really talked about it. But mental health is a really big issue for us and we need support, we need training. And so we added that as, we ended up having to do two rooms because we had four rooms and had another room. And so that became an area that rose to the top, even though it wasn't in the survey. People didn't say, but someone selected it. And it was another, another area that I couldn't quite remember. The library, you wanted to hear about the library. The library one, I, I stopped with the library one. And in that room, there were all librarians in there. I was hoping that there would be other, there was one other teacher that was in it, which was good because it gave them some reflections. And the conversation was good. I think one of the things that the librarians were talking about there was how the connection to literacy and intervention and some of the work that, that happens there. And one of the comments that I made to them was that we really do need to do a better job of promoting what it is that librarians do. Because as, as you know, the process that we did, I didn't arbitrarily select librarians to say, we're gonna, we're gonna cut that. Well, we said, we need one from this school or one from that school. And principals had to put their heads together and figure out what they could reduce at the same time deliver quality programs. And there are a number of areas where people could have selected, but they, they, they said, this is an area we can reduce and we can still provide the resources and the programming that we needed. So I would support them in that direction. I think the, the conversation continues on with libraries. One of the things I also found out about the, the library group, it was that there's a disconnect. There is no, there currently is not a central person in curriculum that aligns with library and pulls the librarians together and gathers information and finds out. So they have no support or no, or any leadership from the top in terms of how they're connecting to the other pieces, right? I know from working in other districts, when that is there, amazing things happen, right? And they become a resource to teachers in terms of building their capacity and doing that. So that would be a good conversation to continue to, to have. And so one of the steps I am gonna take, and I spoke to Stephanie Phillips, curriculum director, in terms of, okay, this library piece, you know, is there anyone responsible? How are we integrating that into curriculum? How is that part of the literacy plan, which it should be, right? I think it's been in isolation and it's partly why maybe it's not being recognized at the level it should be, right? So.
One more from the commissioner. Anybody else? Good news?
Good news. I can't, I can't show you anything. So.
Let's just.
Yeah, well, I, I will show you this, which I think we posted as well too. This is the Vermont Nurses Association honored not just Louise, but a number of other nurses throughout the nation. And she was recognized. And I wanted to sort of acknowledge that, that, you know, she was doing great work. And Vermont, Burlington, once again, has been recognized as a leader.
Louise Munger?
So.
Louise Munger?
Yes, Louise Munger. Yes. So you can go online and see that, but.
Can you pass that around?
Sure. I was gonna show you that. And there's also a document there with, if you want some reading, some other good news items, so.
Where is that there?
On Board Docs.
It's not on Board Docs.
It's not on Board Docs.
On Board Docs?
Well, I have.
Oh, okay.
Maybe you could just send it or post it.
I can send it. I will post it. I have, I have a list of things. So we'll post that up there.
Quick question. Quick question. Did, did you mention in another good news time about the grant that Tech Center got?
This is true. So Tracy Rosakot and Adam Provost, who's the, a teacher there. So this, this is a great example of, you know, I've been talking with administrators on focusing on solutions, not the problems, because there's lots of problems and we can kinda, and there's some challenges in the facility side at the Tech Center. And then what we wanna move to, you know, we're in the 21st century. We keep talking 21st century, but we're already in it, move to that direction. And they were able to put together a proposal and we were awarded a national, national grant. We were one of, I think, eight or 10 high schools in the country that were awarded $200,000 to do this makeover and put in some nice spaces and technology. And now they're gonna have their, their product videotaped and presented. And there's gonna be some other opportunities for them as well too in terms of integrating. So this is a great step in establishing BTC as an integral part of BHS and having students also be able to go and take technical studies at different levels, right? At different high levels. So that, that was great to get those dollars and initiated by, from our staff. So kudos to Adam and Tracy for putting that forward. Thanks for reminding me of.
Thank you.
That's it. I'll close the superintendent's report at 8:05. Move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Chena, seconded by Commissioner Lehman. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye. I'm sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, Jeanne Ashley. Thank you. Next up is the committee reports. We'll start out with infrastructure and technology.
Infrastructure and technology is just following through on the capital plan, which Superintendent Obang has been speaking, spoke about earlier. And just a heads up that our normal meeting on next Tuesday will be at Edmonds. And it's not actually gonna be an ITC meeting. It's gonna be a next, no, I'm sorry. We're canceling. Right, no, no, that's what I mean. We're canceling it because we're going to be presenting the stakeholder portion of the capital plan at Edmonds, right? At Edmonds. Yes. So our meeting is not, we're not having our meeting, our normal meeting. Instead, we're presenting the capital plan. Okay. That's, that's ITC in a nutshell.
Thank you. Curriculum committee?
The curriculum committee just met and we outlined our calendar for the year and we're focusing our work on talking with, through Stephanie, the district personnel responsible for thinking about proficiency-based learning. And we'll do a little bit of looking, thinking about dual enrollment. And also, I forget which month, perhaps December, hear a report on the ways in which library services are being reimagined. So the minutes will have the proposed calendar for the year. So we're trying to focus our attention to learning about some changes in the district and being able to be a resource for the full board as we move forward.
Any questions for our curriculum committee? Seeing none. Diversity and equity?
We did not meet this month.
Any questions for diversity and equity's not meeting this month? Commissioner Chena.
Will we be meeting next month?
Yes.
Okay. And what then?
We'll work it out later, hasn't it?
So it's not gonna be the regular?
It'll always be the regular time, right? Probably the first week of August.
Do you have a question? Seeing none. Moving on to policy and governance. And we have a couple of things that we have to talk about on this one. So just bring them.
So the, what's on the agenda is a motion and it's a motion to approve a first reading of the child abuse and neglect reporting policy and some, and accompanying procedures. This is a statutory requirement. And the committee passed this two committee meetings ago. So it's first reading. And then if there's any questions, comments, suggestions, you know, anything, the committee will take it back and address those and bring it back to the full board with those revisions. If there's no comments, questions, suggestions, whatever, we would still go through the process of a second reading and final approval. So I would like to make a motion to the board to adopt for first reading, the child abuse and neglect reporting policy and accompanying procedures.
Seconded by Commissioner Seguino. Discussion. Commissioner Chena.
So just in reviewing this policy, it seems really simple. It looks like you're basically saying, we're gonna follow the law and then listing the law.
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanna be clear. I think that's fine, but I just wanna be clear if that's what I'm looking at. And then supervisors can assist people in interpreting this law? And I know that's not our role, but just curious, like how this policy would be carried out? Like the person would go to their supervisor if they had a concern and they would coach them on how to make sure they're compliant?
If you would look at the procedures, there's mandatory training.
Where's that part?
That's the second.
I was in a separate document, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I was wondering like how we were gonna, I just know that as a social worker, that this law has caused a lot of confusion and stress.
Yes.
Because it, it increases the burden of reporting.
It does.
So if you even suspect it, you have to make a report. So I know that that's.
Annual training.
Yeah. So I know that, that's kinda hard to, for a person on the ground level, that's hard. So I just wanna, I'll look at that. Sorry to ask. I didn't see the other.
No, no, that's okay. The procedures are relatively simple as well, intentionally so because I think in the training, you know, the district will address a number of the kind of complications that the law raises.
The training is like two and a half hours.
Superintendent Yao.
Thank you, Chair reporter. Yeah, the, the training is quite extensive. It's about two and a half hours. And once you're completed, you get a certification. You get an email certification. And we're in the process, we're, we're moving to electronic format. So hopefully we'll have it running up by next fall. So when staff, we'll have a bank of required trainings that have to go electronically and certified. So we can have, we can track it a little bit better. Right now, it's kind of, you know, one at a, one at a time, but we can see all the mandatory pieces that. So we're in the middle of transitioning with the software. We'll be able to, you know, track everyone's training and be able to support them and that.
Thank you.
Can the board attend that training?
Training's online.
Oh, cool.
Just wanna say, is there anyone, before we visit Commissioner Chena, is there anyone else that has a question on the school board for, regarding this motion? Commissioner Chena?
Yeah, I'm just, I, I'm trying, I know this came out in advance and I'm sorry I didn't look at it. But I do feel like this due diligence thing we speak about, especially as a social worker, and I'm just looking it over. And I don't, the law, I could be missing it, but the law doesn't clarify volunteers or people who are in the schools who aren't employed. And I'm just double checking that, but I don't see that. So I guess my, just a question I'd like to put out there is, I'd, I'd like to make sure there's some kind of, that's taken into account because we do have a lot of like volunteers in the school. They may not be mandated reporters, but if they become aware of this, I do feel like it's the school district's responsibility to look out for the safety and welfare of children. So I don't see anything about that. It's really specific about employed by a school district or an approved or recognized in the school whose contract is paid by a school district or an approved or recognized school. So it doesn't say volunteers in the law.
Because I think the, the law speaks to obligated reporters. And maybe they don't put them in that category. Perhaps that's.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying is even if not, I would, I would rather err on the side of caution.
You want a higher threshold.
Yeah, exactly. That's where I'm getting at. Yeah.
So Commissioner Chena, does that mean that in terms of this policy, you are requesting any changes to the policy or the procedures for this district that may be, you know, over and above the law?
I think so. I think what I'm implying is that I, I feel an ethical obligation to think about that, to consider that the law might not cover all the parties involved. Like for example, well, actually, because it says employed, so food service workers, et cetera, anyone paid is covered. But I'm more concerned about the volunteers. There's a lot of parent volunteers. If a parent knows information, I would just like to see them be able to seek support. And maybe then the staff makes the report. But like, you know what I'm saying? I just don't want something to happen to a kid and us find out that it wasn't reported because it was a volunteer and not a staff. That's really what I'm getting at.
Yeah, and I'd be supportive of that. But I think I'll have to check. But we may have something that obligates people who are working on schools to, to, to abide by all our policies and procedures. So they would fall under that as well as anything else that might be an anti-discrimination thing that comes out that we're gonna say, yeah.
say, yeah, if you're in our schools and you're working with our staff, then you need to follow these procedures.
Okay.
So I'll make sure that, I talked to HR to make sure that we make that connection, but I think we, I'll check, but I think we may have that.
Thanks for hearing me out on that.
So that means that the committee will then rely on the minutes to capture that request and at our committee meeting in July, we will bring it back and look at those, that, those language revisions. Thanks.
So do you want a motion, any further discussion in the school board? Do you want a motion to go ahead and put the first reading?
Yes, contingent upon the.
You made a motion.
Revisions requested.
Yeah, we already had a second, so, all those in favor of approval of the first reading as, as noted, including the, answering the concerns within the minutes that Commissioner Chena brought up, all those in favor, as it stands, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passed unanimously, thank you. Moving on to our final committee report, the Finance Committee report, Commissioner Chena.
I'm going to set a timer, so I stay to one minute.
We can do it for you over here.
Can you make the buzzer go off? All right. So people can refer to the minutes, but we had a discussion about fund balance policy, we looked at the state law and then we talked about reviewing our internal policy and just making sure we feel like it's adequate in comparison to the law, try to keep this brief. We had an update about the fiscal year 2017 implementation, the superintendent said he would give us details at this meeting, like make a presentation at the August board meeting, August, I mean, not July, my bad, August board meeting, sorry, I was looking at you like, uh-oh, but okay, so we're going to hear more in August, sorry. Sorry, it's been a really long day, I felt bad for a second, so I was like, oh, sorry. And then we talked about next steps for our committee and superintendent and the senior director of finance and myself plan to meet, to chart out sort of a yearly routine of the district finances and then having it sort of eventually be translated into our policy governance practices, people could read some details about our discussion in the minutes, but basically the next step was that we were going to meet and talk about sort of what we call, I call the seasons of finance for the school district, because it's kind of like there's a seasonal routine that we follow and we felt strongly that we could document that and be really clear with the community about what happens when, what are your input points on a, on a regular basis, so people know when their opportunities are to give input and it doesn't just happen like after the budget passes, in implementation and then also a plan to communicate that, so that being said, it has been suggested that we not have a finance committee meeting in July because it's, it would be following that presentation at Edmonds, so the email that you sent us, Superintendent Obang, was sent me and Senior Director Lavery was suggesting that, and this just happened like today, so suggesting that we all, we come and we encourage the community to come to that and that we postpone the meeting for that month and meet in August with a bigger agenda and then if we were going to choose to do that, what I would propose is that, that the three of us get together and come to the August meeting with something, you know, to present about the seasons of finance, so it's like we missed a month, but we're coming with a lot more info, there's also Senior Director Lavery, I don't know if you want to say anything, but there's, it sounds like there's a lot of other stuff we'll be doing in August, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, I think that all makes sense.
Okay, sorry, I tried to keep it to a minute, it was two minutes, 30 seconds, because I messed up and forgot.
Any questions for Commissioner Chena?
First, the buzzer.
Huh?
First, the buzzer.
Commissioner Court, did you have a question? Seeing none, we will phone, close the Finance Committee report, which closes the committee reports, our next item is the executive session, which we have two executive sessions we're going to be going into and I'll go through each one individually through a motion. We have a motion to consider executive session to discuss contract negotiations where premature disclosure could place the district at a substantial disadvantage, can I have a second, please? Commissioner Court, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of entering executive session for their reason, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passed unanimously. Second executive session is to consider, to discuss a personal matter where premature disclosure could place the district at a substantial disadvantage, can I have a second? And any discussion? Did you raise your hand?
Personnel.
Personnel, yes. All those in favor of entering executive session for noted, what I, as I noted, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passed unanimously, thank you.